The Board of Trustees' regular meeting is now called to order at 4:32 PM. We will welcome members of the public. Instructions on making public comment are posted in Item 1 of the agenda. Catherine, will you do roll call, please?
Yes, Jennifer Baker. Here. Inez Deluna. Rafael Rios.
Here.
Elizabeth Goff.
Here.
Kyle Iverson. Student trustee Jorge Alejandro Martinez.
Who told me he has class on Thursday at this time, unfortunately.
Okay, so he is absent.
Through this semester.
Michael Baldini is so far absent, we're expecting him to show up. And then trustee Dodd.
Is here.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Do the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance for the United States of America, which stands for our nation under our liberty and justice for all.
It will move to adoption of the agenda. I do have one change, and I was going to move Item 12.2, the Resolution to relocate an easement for public utility purposes to the consent calendar. Any issues with that, anybody? Nope. Any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll adopt by consensus and move it along to a public comment on closed session items, where the Board will devote up to 15 minutes to hear comments regarding closed session agenda items. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
Yes, let me see. Oh, no, we do not.
Okay, and I haven't received any, and I just checked my emails as well. So at this time, the Board will move into closed session, covering two items: Conference with labor negotiators and public employee performance evaluation. And we will return at approximately 5:30 PM. Board will return back from closed session at 5:35 PM. There are no announcements. And we will move to Item 6, Public Comment. A general public comment, which is an opportunity governed by the Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and different advantage points. The Board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion, but we look forward to the opportunity to gather community input. The Board will devote up to 15 minutes to hear public comments regarding any subject not appearing on the agenda this evening, but over which the Board has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will occur on any public comments, and each comment shall last no longer than three minutes. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, I see no hands raised.
And I haven't received any public comment by email or otherwise. We'll move to Item 7.1, Philippine's American History Month. On September 9, 2009, the California State Assembly voted to designate the month of October as Filipino-American History Month. The Board of Trustees recognizes this month in its contribution to the Philippine-Americans in our community and encourages all students, staff, and families to deepen their understanding of the Philippine community by celebrating their history, culture, and their many important contributions to American history and society. A lot going on here. Item 7.2, Student Equity Plan Update.
Good evening, trustees, Dr. Powell, members of the Napa Valley College community and community members. I'm pleased to present your information and overview of the development of the 2022 through 2025 Napa Valley College Student Equity Plan. Next slide, please. So first, I want to recognize the members of the Student Equity Plan Development Committee. This committee consists of members from each constituent group senate. There's a student representative and members from Dr. Powell's executive leadership. So what you have here on the slide are the members of the committee that's developing the Student Equity Plan. Next slide, please. The development of our plan is guided by a new framework from the Chancellor's office. This framework encourages a more encompassing analysis of the institution as a whole and is intended to shape transformation at an institutional level. So elements of the Student Equity Plan guidelines from the Chancellor's office include that the plan be designed to increase collaboration and integration with other areas of the college, to keep students at the center of the plan, for this to be an opportunity to transform the institution in new ways, and for the plan to design a stronger alignment to guided pathways, the vision for success goals, and the Chancellor's call for action. Next slide, please. So this slide presents a comparative framework that compares the previous Student Equity Plan, which is designated as SEP 1.0, and the contemporary Student Equity Plan, which is Student Equity Plan 2.0. So in the first, the previous version, the plan was transactional. It consisted of, you know, elements that were to be done and for a particular outcome to arise from that. What the new Student Equity Plan is looking for is a transformational approach. So how will this Student Equity Plan create transformations in the very structure of our institution? The former plans were compliance-oriented, whereas the new plan is expected to be community-driven. So it will emerge from a process that is reflective, that is thoughtful and meaningful, and that integrates community input as well. The former plan consisted of activities, one-and-done activities, right? Do-do-it, it's over. This new plan is expected to integrate a fluid and dynamic process. So the plan will incorporate opportunities for review and for a change of course, as needed, right? Based on what intermediate reviews of data and outcome is revealing. So it's not static, it is dynamic. The former plan was race-neutral. It didn't specifically address the needs of racialized, minoritized student populations. What the data reveals is that for equity, we really need to be thinking about the influence of race and how that plays a part in the educational outcomes of our students. So this new plan is explicitly to be race-conscious. Before the Student Equity Plan stood alone by itself, this new plan is intended to be integrated with the other existing institutional plans, so that it's a very comprehensive, integrated framework for all of the operations of the college. Previously, there was compartmentalized funding set aside for student equity, and that was mainly in the form of student equity and achievement funds. What the Chancellor's office is calling on us to do is to really think about the resources at the college as a whole, right? That the funding to support student equity doesn't only come from SEA funds, but that we think more comprehensively about all of our resources and that we augment and leverage a multiplicity of forms to support student equity activities and frameworks. Next slide, please, Catherine. So the shift away from activities is intended to move us away from the development of disconnected equity activities. It's also intended for us to move beyond student services and to look into what's happening in the classroom and with the curriculum. So the last Student Equity Plan framework really didn't afford the opportunity for us to think much about what was happening in terms of instruction. So the framework from the Chancellor's office is specifically having us integrate our delivery of education, both what's happening in the classroom and how we're supporting that through other support services. We're to leverage existing work and build efforts across the campus in terms of the reforms that we're intending, right? So this work is not to stand alone, but it's to be integrated with other plans and activities and to work as an integrated whole to uplift equitable opportunities for our students and to have equitable outcomes. And importantly, when we think about inequities, we're thinking about what happens at a systemic level, okay? So what we're dealing with are inequities that are embedded in our systems that were established hundreds of years ago and that still shape our institutions. So when we're thinking about what we need to do to enhance equitable outcomes for our students, we really need to think about the system in which our students are learning. So we need to focus on systemic responses. Next slide, please. So built-in to the Student Equity Plan development process is an opportunity for us as an institution to reflect on the last Student Equity Plan, okay? What did we say that we were going to do in that plan? What did we actually do? How did that result in better performance for our students? Or did it? Right? So we need to think about what we did in the past and also to have that inform the development of this new Student Equity Plan. So what we're doing is really taking the time to reflect on what we've done in the past and to think about how we need to do things differently. Next slide. The Student Equity Plan framework is calling for focused attention on disproportionately impacted populations. And a shift from previous plans is that the Chancellor's office wants us to focus on a particular student population that is historically disproportionately impacted. And the understanding is that when we develop systems and structures to address the needs of our most disproportionately impacted students, those structures and frameworks benefit our entire student population, okay? So we will be focusing on our Black African-American student population in the development of the next Student Equity Plan. Next slide, please, Catherine. So the Student Equity Plan is also data-informed. So we're looking at disproportionately impacted student data. We're developing college plans that center and prioritize student populations that have experienced the most disproportionate impact for the various metrics that we choose to focus upon. And we need to understand that this is not a zero-sum game, right? By directing attention and resources to our most disproportionately impacted students doesn't mean that we're taking away from other students, right? So we need to move away from that zero-sum mindset. Directed attention that supports our most disadvantaged results in the development of improved infrastructures that benefit the entirety of the student population. Next slide, please. So also thinking about what other types of data is being considered for the development of the Student Equity Plan. We are looking at focus group interviews that were done by Dr. Frank Harris, who was leading the Community College Equity Assessment Lab in 2019 and 2020. He did focus group interviews with disproportionately impacted students, and we have the benefit of the analysis that was done by CEEL and recommendations by CEEL about what we can be doing as an institution to better serve our disproportionately impacted students. We've also got recommendations from the DEI Committee. We have input from our learning communities, CACSE Cyan, which is the learning community that supports our Philippine-American population, Quente, the learning community that supports our Latinx population, and AMoja, which supports our African-American or Black student population. So we have had a retreat with the learning communities to gather information about their best practices, about the challenges for them in doing the work they need to do to support these communities of students and to ask from them, what do you need from us to be able to better serve these communities? We know that the learning community model is a very effective model that results in improved performance for our students. So what we can do as an institution to better support these learning communities will have a positive impact on the students moving forward. We're also seeking community input. We're going to be having President's Forum on Equity next Tuesday, and that will provide an opportunity not only for Dr. Powell to discuss his larger vision about equity at Napa Valley College and for us to think about even what do we mean by equity, right? To start to unpack that term, but also to review what is expected from this Student Equity Plan and other initiatives. And lastly, to seek community feedback, okay? So the data that we're using for the development of the Student Equity Plan is coming from multiple sources. Next slide, please. So the development of the Student Equity Plan is an opportunity for us to align the planning for this Student Equity Plan with Board Goal Number 2, which is to honor our diversity and promote equity, inclusion, and accessibility. It's also an opportunity for us to think creatively about the implementation of Dr. Powell's prioritization on being student-centered, equity-focused, and community-oriented in everything that we do at Napa Valley College. It's an opportunity for us to more deeply integrate equity considerations into the planning and budget process as well as other kinds of processes that govern the work that we do at the college. In thinking about resource allocation, this is an opportunity for us to engage in an equity analysis of how our resources are allocated and the processes by which that is done. So this is an opportunity for us to look at the Planning and Budget Committee to ensure that it includes members of the DEI Committee, so that that equity lens is present in the planning and budget process. It's an opportunity for us to look at the priorities of the institution and to make sure that we're matching funds with those priorities that we're establishing. It's an opportunity to develop a tracking mechanism for us to understand how that money is being spent and really to do an equity audit of all budget requests overall. So we also have the opportunity, through this Student Equity Plan development, to think about student equity and achievement funding, okay? What are the expenditures on that fund source? What percentage of it is available for direct student support and enrichment? And also for us to move beyond that particular fund source to think about other sources of funds to support equity. Next slide, please. Part of what is informing the development of this plan are some very important definitions of equity terms. So the Center for Urban Education, in September of 2020, they produced this report, which was a reflection on the Student Equity Plan development process from the prior period, from 2019 to 2022. And so they conducted a report, and part of that report included the following definitions, which I think are important for us to consider. So I won't read through all of this, but I want to emphasize that these statements emphasize that equity reflects a social justice orientation. It confronts historical and temporary structures that embed racial inequality and exclusion of minority groups from centers of power and resources. And it calls attention to institutional structures, policies, and practices employing an anti-racist approach to our analysis of these structures and policies and practices. Next slide, please. We need to think about how equity is embedded in the system. And so the Center for Urban Education provides this definition of systematic equity. So this definition illuminates that we need to develop a web of integrated processes with interrelated elements to uphold and reinforce equitable ideas, distribution of power and resources, strategies, conditions, habits. And I think that's really important that that's included because that refers to the unconscious, you know, everyday practices that we engage in that we're not even thinking about, okay? And then outcomes as well. Next slide, please. So where are we at in this development process? So we've established workgroups to begin the reflective and analytical process of developing the plan. We divided our larger Student Equity Plan Committee into three workgroups that are evaluating the progress made during the last Student Equity Planning cycle and thinking about how that's informing the development of the new plan. We have another group that is analyzing quantitative and qualitative data. And we have a third group that is analyzing the input that we're receiving. I've begun to receive some of that input. I did a presentation for Flex Day on the development of the Student Equity Plan, and so we got some feedback from that forum. We also have information from the Learning Community Retreat. And then, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Powell and I will be hosting a forum next Tuesday, and that'll be another avenue to seek input. So this process has been quite fruitful, yielding a robust set of ideas which can shape the type of transformative plan being called for by the Chancellor's office. Among those ideas are the integration of professional learning opportunities for all employees to become more literate in intercultural competence and to improve the delivery of education and support, to create a more welcoming and inclusive environment for our students and employees, a better alignment of the Student Equity Plan with budget and planning process, and an integrated Student Equity and Guided Pathways framework for our institution, among other ideas that we're developing in the committee. So the next steps, we're going to continue the work of these individual workgroups as we continue to flesh out the plan. We have the Equity Forum next week. We're comparing analyses from the workgroups with guided pathways, workgroup recommendations, and we're locating where the alignments are. We're reviewing SEA funding analysis, which was presented from the Financial and Accounting Office. And we're developing a draft, which we will then have available to circulate for review and feedback. And then in November, we will have a more final version of that to bring back to the Board of Trustees for your review and approval and to take also to the Planning and Budget Committee and also the Academic Senate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Maitreya.
This concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Mind just hanging out? I'm just, if there's any other questions from our trustees?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you and our community that participated in this. I think, I mean, I'm just hopeful that we're on the right track and that we really are actually making transformative change. And you included all the perfect things that we need to do. It needs to be, you know, we need to think of equity in everything we do. So it's just wait to see, and we'll be working on that.
Thank you very much.
Trustee Baker?
Yeah, I had a quick question. I really like the concept of addressing the most disproportionately impacted and then like having like one group and then really focusing on that group and hopefully all boats rise. But I had a question about the, about addressing the Black and African-American community. Not that I argue that they're the most disproportionately impacted, but I'm just curious if you have any concern about the fact that since that's such a small percentage of our community, if there's an adequate sample size to be able to be effective in developing something that can be pushed out to our other groups?
So we, there's a wealth of data, first of all, in scholarly publications and, you know, other, you know, professional organizations that focus on equity and education that attest to the need to address the needs of Black and African-American students because they are the most disproportionately impacted students historically in California and really probably across the country. In addressing the needs of those students, we're looking at the structures overall that support these students. So we're thinking about the needs of the students that are the most marginalized, and in developing those frameworks and structures, we're really improving our delivery of education across the board, right? And so the frameworks that we're developing for this population will also benefit every student at Napa Valley College. So that's the rationale for the selection of that population.
Thank you very much, Dr. Maitreya.
Thank you.
Move to Action Item 7.3, Resolution 22-38, Undocumented Student Action Week. I'll maybe take a moment to read a few of the whereas's in the resolution, but Catherine, before we jump into it, is there any public comment on this? And I'll read the first few paragraphs. Whereas, which I think is particularly important in light of a recent court of appeal decision, whereas more than 2 million undocumented immigrants of all nationalities and backgrounds call California home, including more than 183,000 deferred action for childhood arrivals, DACA recipients. California, whereas California has uplifted and empowered undocumented immigrants to seek a better life by providing access to public services and extending protections through sanctuary laws. Whereas undocumented immigrants have historically faced racism, poverty, language, and other barriers restricting access to higher education. Whereas the passage of Assembly Bill AB 40 authored by Marco Antonio Firebaugh and signed by Governor Davis in 2001 declared that long-term California residents, regardless of their citizenship status, may pay in-state fees at California public colleges and universities. Whereas 85,500 undocumented students, including 72,000 California community college students, benefit from AB 540 today. And moving to the resolution itself, that the district relentlessly supports college access, inclusion, community, and success for all undocumented students. And be it further resolved that the district will participate in Undocumented Student Action Week and cultivate policy. Action Week and cultivate policies, procedures, and best practices to support undocumented students in their pursuit of a college education. And be it further resolved that the district calls on Congress to adopt comprehensive immigration, reform, and provide financial resources for undocumented students. Passed and adopted on this day if we have a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Luna, trustee Baker with a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll adopt the motion unanimously, the resolution unanimously. And then to a very timely update, 7.4 Accreditation, Focus Site Visit and Exit Report.
Thank you, Dr. Oneal.
Good evening, board. Okay. Saw a different founding, so I wasn't sure that that was the presentation. Okay, good evening, board. So I'm going to go ahead and have you advance to the next slide, please. Okay, so this slide shows where we've been in 2022, and hopefully a lot of this sounds familiar, but on February 24th, our assigned peer review team met and reviewed our Iser, which we had, our Institutional Self-Evaluation Report, which we submitted to the ACCJC back in December of 2021. In March, March 15th, we received a document outlining the core inquiries that resulted from our team's formative review of the Iser. That document identified six core inquiries, and those were associated with the six general areas listed here. So and they're all numbered one through six in that document. So one was professional development, two is systematic and innovative use of data and planning processes, and integration and decision-making. Systematic evaluation or review and adoption of policies and processes was number three. Employee evaluation, number four. Five was, it had to do with resource management, and six dealt with leadership and governance practices and processes. The next step in the process outlined by the ACCJC was the Focus Site Visit, which occurred this week, beginning on Monday, the 10th, and concluding yesterday. During the Focus Site Visit, the team conducted 19 interviews. They did have 23 originally scheduled. There were a lot of kind of moving parts, particularly Monday and Tuesday. Those 19 interviews included one interview with students, as well, then there were faculty, classified professionals, AC, administrative confidential staff, and trustees. As required by the ACCJC, the Focus Site Visit included a tour of our main campus, as well as the Upper Valley Campus. And it included an open forum and concluded with the exit report that was provided yesterday morning. Next slide, please. So Focus Site Visit and Exit Report. The purpose of the Focus Site Visit is to evaluate MVC relative to the accreditation standards, and particularly focusing on those that were identified in the core inquiries, which required a little more investigation by the team to complete their assessment. They also assess how well MVC is achieving its mission. And the Focus Site Visit yields recommendations for quality assurance, increasing effectiveness, and improvement. During the visit, they conducted interviews associated with the core inquiries to explore those further with us. The exit report, which was presented at the end of the visit yesterday, reflects the peer review team's preliminary findings, and that's very important to emphasize. It is not official until the commission takes action on MVC's report in January. The, there was one anticipated area of commendation that was outlined by the team at the exit report, and that is professional development, including in the areas of distance education and effective leadership. And that was for all employee groups. And that was what originally, that pertains to Core Inquiry 1. There were four areas for improvement that they stated very briefly at the exit interview as they are preliminary. So I expect when we get the team's report and then the action letter from the ACCJC, these will be fleshed out in more detail with citations of appropriate standards. So the four areas of improvement include fiscal planning and resource allocation. That's associated with Core Inquiry 5. Review and evaluation of practices, board policies, and administrative procedures. That's in Core Inquiry 3. Defining decision-making roles and processes, that's associated with Core Inquiry 6. An evaluation and assessment of outcomes within student services, which is a portion of Core Inquiry 2. You might have noticed the one that's missing is Core Inquiry 4, and that is because it was addressed. The first thing that the team did when they arrived on campus on Monday was notified us that we should cancel all interviews associated with Core Inquiry 4 because the team had deemed the evidence sufficient to address that Core Inquiry. The team commended MVC on the work that has been done in relation to the core inquiries since, since March, and they appreciated the work that, and a substantial amount of work that had been done during that period. And upon the team's departure, Dr. Powell indicated that work continues in the four areas that have been noted by the team. And the key thing is to not become complacent and continue maintaining the momentum that we've built over the past couple of years, I guess I'd say. Next slide, please. So the remainder of the timeline, so draft the team report. That's what the, our peer review team is going to be working on completing their work in the next two weeks. So that's roughly by the end of October. That draft report will then be sent to Dr. Powell to review, and he gets approximately one week to review it, so in early November. The, Dr. Powell will only be permitted to point out errors of fact. So it's not any of the, you know, assessment that the team will be reflecting in the report, but if there are any errors of fact. And an example that I can give from our last time around is that the, at the very beginning of the team's report, they misstated the end date of their site visit. So that's an error of fact. And so, you know, if it says October 13th, then our report will say, no, you left on the 12th, so not a big deal. But that's the kind of error of fact that we are, that Dr. Powell will be given the opportunity to identify. So he will, and I should say that the report that he receives is a confidential report for his eyes only. The, so then he'll communicate to the team chair about any errors of fact that he has noted, and then the, the chair will work with the team to make any adjustments based on those errors of fact as necessary. And then they will submit it to the ACCJC by the middle of November. The commission will then take action at their meeting planned for January 11th through 13th of 2023. And as required by the U.S. Department of Education, we will be notified of, of the commission's action within 30 days of that January meeting. So by mid-February. In practice of late, it tends to be the end of January more than middle of February, but, you know, things happen. So that's the requirement by law is the, is by 30 days after their meeting. Next slide, please. So I apologize ahead of time. These next two slides are very text-heavy. I'm just going to kind of highlight some of them. So this is actions on accredited institutions, and this is, there are three types of actions that can reaffirm accreditation. And I'll telegraph this by saying, this is where we want to be. And also, this is, these are excerpts from the guide that's cited at the bottom of the slide. And so you can refer to the policy if you want more information. Okay, so the top of the list is reaffirm accreditation. So that's when an institution is found to be in compliance with the eligibility requirements, accreditation standards, and commission policies. Accreditation is reaffirmed for the entirety of the seven-year cycle, and a midterm is required midway through the seven-year cycle. A midterm report is required of every institution, no matter what the action is taken on the comprehensive. Next on the list is reaffirm accreditation and require a follow-up report. So in this, the institution continues to demonstrate compliance with those three types of documents that were listed on the first action description, but it has some minor deficiencies. So that's what the follow-up report is required to address. So the institution is required to submit the follow-up report demonstrating that it's resolved those deficiencies. The commission will specify in their action letter the issues to be addressed and the due date of the report. The period of affirmation, of reaffirmation is seven years, and again, a midterm is required. Next, reaffirmation of accreditation for 18 months and require a follow-up report. So this is if the institution has significant deficiencies, again, in terms of eligibility requirements, the accreditation standards, and commission policies. So the institution is required to submit a follow-up report demonstrating that it's resolved all of the cited deficiencies. And in the action letter, the commission will specify the issues to be addressed, the due date of the report, and whether it will include a peer review team visit or not. The period of reaffirmation is for 18 months. And then upon successful resolution of the cited deficiencies, the institution will be reaffirmed for the remainder of the seven-year cycle. In the event that, so the, the final part there pertains to the third bullet or the third type of action. So if the deficiencies are not resolved through the follow-up report that's submitted, the commission may defer action and require a second follow-up report that would not be longer than 12 months, or the due date wouldn't be longer than 12 months from the action. It may or may not include a peer review team visit, and accreditation status continues until the commission considers the institution's status in the designated timeframe. And the other option is that the commission can place the college on sanction, and that's either warning probation or show cause, which we'll have on the next slide. And so at the bottom of the slide, Catherine, if you could just scroll down a little bit, thank you. So the source is the ACCJC's Policy on Commission Actions from this year on page three, if you want to look at the more detailed language around these. All right, so the commission can also take actions indicating sanction. And again, sorry for the denseness of the slide here. I will say that it is rare that the commission moves an institution to sanction resulting directly from a comprehensive review. That said, it can and does happen, and as indicated in the language that's on this slide. And then also in the last four reviews, so for 2021 and 2022, the actions taken by the commission, there was in June 2021, they placed all four colleges in the Peralta District on probation as a result of their comprehensive review. So it can and does happen. And in the case of the Peralta District, I think the major areas of deficiency pertain to standards 3D, 4C, and 4D. 4D doesn't pertain to us because we're not a multi-campus district. Okay, so to the language here. So there are three actions that the commission can take indicating sanction. The first is to issue a warning, and that happens when the commission determines that an institution does not meet one or more of the standards, and the deficiencies lead to serious non-compliance. So reaffirmation for 18 months is not warranted. The warning indicates that the institution must correct the deficiencies, refrain from certain activities, or initiate certain activities in order to meet the standards. The timeframe for resolution is usually 12 to 18 months, and the warning period may include additional reports and visits at a frequency determined by the commission. If warning is issued as a result of the institution's comprehensive review, reaffirmation is delayed, and the accredited status of the institution continues during the warning period. So since we are, we are reaffirmed and our accreditation status is in place at this point, that would maintain, even if there's any level of sanction. So impose probation, and these kind of go up the scale in order of severity here. So the commission has determined that the institution does not meet one or more standards, and there is serious concern regarding the level and/or scope of the non-compliance issues. The timeframe for resolution is usually 12 to 18 months. The probation period may again include additional reports and visits at a frequency to be determined by the commission. Institutions placed on probation are required to submit a teach-out plan. That's the kind of stepping it up a notch. And again, if probation is imposed as a result of the comprehensive review, the accredited status remains in place during the period of probation. And the final one is to mandate show cause, and this is when the commission finds the institution to be in substantial non-compliance with the standards. The institution is required to demonstrate why its accreditation should not be withdrawn at the end of the stated period by providing evidence that it has corrected the deficiencies and is in compliant with the standards. So institutions placed on show cause are, are again required to submit a teach-out plan, and there, again, there could be additional reports and visits. And again, the accredited status remains in place during the period of show cause. All right, next slide is the final one. So, and other accreditation-related news from the week, and that hopefully isn't really news to all of you, but Dr. Catherine Webb, who is the ACCJC vice president that's assigned to MVC, notified Dr. Powell that MVC has been removed from enhanced monitoring. And the removal was based on, you can't, the emoji of the little celebration is kind of covered by the screens there. There was some poor placement by me, I guess. So the removal was based on the submission of our annual fiscal report that was back in April, and that was also as part of a new practice that was shared with the Board of Trustees in May. So that's the trigger for the enhanced monitoring. There we go. So, and as you all know, trustee Dodd shared the news with the campus community via email earlier this week. So nice timing on that. That is all I have for you today.
Thank you, Dr. Oneal. I have, I'll just jump into a question if you guys have mine. In terms of, it goes from, I'm assuming peer review makes a recommendation to the commission? Is that, and then the commission makes the decision?
So their, so their report will take each standard one at a time and include a detailed description of their findings, and then the commission, the, there is no recommendation from the team. It's only the commission takes action on an institution. But my, I assume that since Dr. Webb is, is assigned to us, she might make a recommendation on behalf of the team. She's the most familiar with MVC among all of the ACCJC staff, and so that might be how it gets presented to the commission.
Great, thank you. Trustee Iverson?
I just, I know it takes a team, and there was a lot of hard work by a lot of people with this whole process, but I just wanted to personally thank you for everything you do with this. It's a hard job and a lot of reports, and you do it well, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy that this day has come, at long last.
Dr. Oneal, just because it's on top of mind and you're here right now, when we did, when trustee Iverson and I did our interview with some of the peer review team members, they asked about how annual review, or how you, how did we calendar our, our board policy review? And something that I said I was going to do, but I didn't do, was follow up with you about, on our last agenda in September, we did, you very helpfully cabinet prepared a very helpful outline in terms of the years that we're going through each article of our board policy. And that's what they were asking, like, do you even have a timeline to show kind of how you're reviewing it, you know, on a year-to-year basis, you know, how you're going through your board policies? So I don't know if we've shared that with them, but if not, I wanted to let you know.
Yeah, so it was, it was attached to the college update as part of Core Inquiry 3. And then also while the team was here, I did provide them a copy of the agenda item about chapter two that's on the agenda for this tonight's meeting, so they are aware.
Okay. Okay, all right, well, good. Then forget about it. Thank you again, Dr. Oneal. I do, Catherine, do we have any public comment on this item? I'm assuming not. I didn't receive anything. Okay. Okay, then we will move to item 7.5, our new trustee orientation plan.
Thank you, President Dodd. So the document coming up now outlines a draft version of a new trustee orientation plan for the two new trustees that we'll be have joining us in the next, next term, next cycle. So just a little context to this, the, you know, the motivation behind this is that, you know, the job that you all do is, is very complicated. It's complex, there's a lot of moving parts to it. Not only do you need to know the basics of how we, you know, we run our meetings and, you know, what decorum is appropriate for these settings and all the rules that we have to follow per law. I think equally and more important in some, some instances, you know, just learning more about the campus and the college itself, learning about the people, having a thorough understanding about where we're going as an institution, and, you know, how we structure and govern ourselves internally as a campus. So with that in mind, I present this, actually not as an action item, but just an information item with a solicitation for edits and input, if you have them, that you can send directly to me. But I present the first version of a draft series of orientation sessions, two of them that I'm proposing here for the, the incoming trustees that we have. The first session would be an overall introduction to the college itself, covering the covering these, these main three things of the personnel, the college operations, and then our planning processes internally to the campus. And the second session would be an introduction to the board, which would include some time with both the board president and vice president. It would include a thorough overview of, of things like our protocols, guidelines. Obviously, we go over some of the information in the board handbook, lift out the things that were most pertinent. And then I think wrapping it up with, with the calendar of, of both our local events and also a heavy encouragement for our trustees, both returning and new, to participate in the league's series of training events, which are phenomenal. I know many of you have participated in those already, but to encourage that participation, get it on your calendars. Again, it's a very, a very challenging job that you have. And we want to make sure that we're providing opportunity for the new folks joining the team to, to learn as much as they can and be prepared when they step into this role.
Questions, feedback, trustee De Luna?
Just can I attend as well? Because I never got one.
It would, anyone who wants to come is, yes.
I was thinking about trustee De Luna when we were, when you were going over this because she came on during COVID and I don't think ever got a proper orientation or steering.
That's right, I haven't had one either, so maybe I'll attend.
Yeah, I have a few suggestions, anyone else? Catherine? I think when talking about just budget, I do think it would probably be helpful on that. And I know you're not getting into that granular on this, but to deliver that, the FICMAT report too, in terms of that. And certainly kind of, I forgot what's that, FICMAT's kind of 32-point plan or 42 thing kind of that, that they check mark of signs of a healthy institution, I think that would be really helpful. I wondered too, when learning about the budget, if, if that could be a little more almost like a formalized process itself and introducing the planning and budget committee too, which I suspect would probably be helpful for new members of the planning and budget committee. I don't, I don't know, maybe some thoughts in the room on, on that piece, but that's just a suggestion on that. And yeah.
Well, now Chair Dodd, if I may.
Okay, here we go.
Well, you got a little bit detailed. One of the things that I, I remember that was difficult and I saw it and it may, may have been in one of the league's documents, just kind of institutional or educational language, acronyms. And I mean, I remember sitting here, first few meetings and not understanding what the heck people were saying because they were all in acronyms, you know, and so if that's not in there, I think that's important.
You know, that actually was in there. I don't know if I deleted it by accident, but it was a glossary of terms because we are so acronym heavy as an institution. I'm, I'm right there with you. That will definitely come back if it's not on there.
I swear I've seen a glossary at some point.
And then just one more, that's a great suggestion, onboard protocol to have our board goals in there as well. Anything else going once, going twice? And Catherine, do we have, I'm not sure if I asked this for this item, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I should have asked that for it first. Good direction?
That's perfect.
Thank you.
And if, if it, if the board would like to see the actual, you know, the, the training modules themselves, of which many of these things will be components, more than happy to send that out as we get closer. We don't have dates yet, I'm proposing a few dates. I, I need to get in touch with our, with both of our new incoming board members to confirm their availability, but there are a few dates we're proposing, so I'll connect with both you two, Kyle and Jeff, if I can, if I can get this on your calendar too.
Are you, is there a plan just with this to get some of that stuff out?
Yes. Enough time to review, yes.
Thank you very, very much for following up on this. I assume Catherine, you might have had a little bit of a role in this as well. So thank, thank you, thank you both and whoever else is involved is a really important thing that you guys are doing, kind of under, under the radar, but really helpful to make sure our trustees start off on the right foot. We will move to information item 7.6, consideration of remote work. Catherine, any public comment on this, maybe before we jump into it? I see, I see one, Mr. Mario on his, on his feet. Please, please. If you would just say your name for the.
Thank you, I'm Joshua Mario, here again to talk about remote work. First thing I think I just want to say is that it's nicely illustrated the usefulness of a flexible remote capacity by our trustee, one of the trustees today. I also just like to say then, I really appreciate putting together the presentation, taking the issue or giving the issue in serious consideration. Thank you very much, forward to hearing the presentation. And the last thing is just to say that I believe, you know, we're, there's only one option is moving forward. And how we're going to move forward is kind of the question. I believe it should include remote work and I think that's been made clear. So I'm just going to finish with a quote from Bill Gates on this topic. He said, "The competition to hire the best will increase in the years ahead. Companies that give extra flexibility to their employees will have the edge in this area." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mario. Catherine, do we have anybody on Zoom raising their hands? Okay. Well, then I want to kick it off to Dr. Powell, you can kick it off, please.
Okay, thank you, President Dodd. So next slide, please. Just wanted to start with the recap of where we were at, the things that have led up to, to the current situation with respect to, you know, remote work, the timeline, just a reminder here. Of course, the closure, board declaration of emergency closure way back, seems like a thousand years ago in 2020. And then from spring 2020 to spring 2022, the emergency closure of the campus, which of course resulted in, in a number of increased online courses, which have persisted in largely, larger numbers than they were prior to the emergency closure. And then of course, a shift of some, some offices to remote work and emphasis on some because I, I do want to acknowledge that there were several individuals and, and several, you know, entire offices and departments that, that, that did actually come back on campus and have been here for the majority of this, of this closure. So that, that led us to the March 25th announcement of the return to campus from Dr. Frost. And the, the initial timeline of that was the reopen for normal business hours with stagger staff on April 18th. And then they identified, or he identified the August 1st, 2022 return of all staff to in-person work back in that initial email. And some of the things that factored into the consideration for the return to campus, we're, we're first and foremost, the campus health and safety protocols. And, and when I speak on these, these items, these are things that, you know, from the three months that I've been here, have been conversations that I've had when, when initially starting in July, July 1st, and then having the question posed to me whether the return to work was still warranted because that was one of the very first questions that, that, that was really posed to me even before I started, were we going to continue to move forward? So these are things that I asked about, right? And things, my observations that I've had. So the first question was, you know, what are our campus health and safety protocols? Are we asking people to return to work in an environment that's safe? And so when we, you know, convened our committee, our EOP committee, Emergency Operations Protocol Committee, that was one of the first questions that I asked. Do we have a safe environment? And we walked through the, you know, the, the conditions that we have in place to protect employees and students. And we came to the conclusion fairly quickly that we had really created a safe environment for our employees. I won't list the, you know, the, the number of discussions that we had around that relative to, you know, filtering the air and, and masking and screens, but there are a number of protocols that we've outlined in prior emails, I think, that really demonstrate the, the campus is a healthy place for people to return. Second question for me was really, really the status of IT. I'm going to go out of order here a little bit because I started, I had the, the unique pleasure of starting a few weeks after the ransomware attack, right? And so the question was, well, you know, how has this impacted our capacity and ability to provide services for students and a productive work environment for our employees? Given that we are still in the process of rebuilding a lot of our IT systems and addressing this ransomware attack and, you know, the, the preceding issues that had really led to the cybersecurity vulnerability. And so that was one of the considerations. Enrollment was a strong consideration tied to the IT and ransomware attack because our systems were down for several weeks where students couldn't register during the prime enrollment period. And so thinking about how a remote work environment would, would either create or hinder opportunities for students to actually enroll and, and for us to grow back to the size of institution that we really know we can and should be, was a consideration. And then this last piece, which has been something that has been a theme throughout the first few months that I've been here in terms of the, the colleges' connection with the community and in some instances, lack thereof, right? The, the very expressed concern that, that I've heard from, from community members about, you know, NBC's presence in the community, the assessment piece of, of remote work really had to consider what impact that would have on our efforts to reestablish these types of relationships with key community partners. So, next slide, please. So I think Joshua said it well, right? There's, the, the changing nature of work is, is such that we're in a very different environment, not just within the higher education space, but within just the world of work in general than we were, you know, pre-COVID, right? And I think that as with most organizations, having some form of remote work and allowances for that is something that really is inevitable for us. I, I believe that. I've shared with the campus community my own personal perspective as being someone who helped, you know, Los Rios Community College District, you know, one of the largest districts in the, you know, in the country to really establish and prepare itself for, you know, a remote work environment and delivery of services remotely. So intimately familiar with the, the components that go into making an institution prepared for that, having worked in that, in that space for, for really two and a half years, almost three years. And so I do see it as something that, that really is a, a component of our future. What that looks like is, is subject for discussion and consideration, but it will be here. I think the other component that, you know, keeping that in mind, because this is something that, you know, I think is inevitable to some degree and, and something that can create tremendous efficiencies for the college, really prioritizing, you know, a comprehensive approach that is very thoughtful, deliberate and intentional, rather than being ad hoc or one-off, is something that's a priority. Because when we do, if and when we do roll this out, then ensuring that we've thought through all contingencies is highly important. Next slide. With that being said, having had so much exposure in this space and experience in, in preparing a district to transition to more remote work friendly environments, there's a lot in my initial scan and in the few months that I've been here that I can see that we really need to establish in form of benchmarks before, you know, I can in good conscience recommend that this is something that we adopt or move forward with adopting. And that really begins, you know, no surprise with, with healthy IT systems. There are a number of human resources protocols that need to be discussed and revisited i- as a component of this process. And of course, we need to ensure that whatever we do does not detract or deter from our capacity to really address our enrollment concerns and issues and achieve our enrollment goals and then really reestablish those healthy relationships with our community. What I'm proposing is that we establish some very specific benchmarks. And these aren't comprehensive. This is, the cabinet and I, you know, chatted about this several times, brainstormed what some of the immediate benchmarks are and then thought, you know, what, what could be future benchmarks down the road, once we accomplish some of the initial goals that would be important for us to really, you know, set as goals for ourselves as an institution before we would even begin to consider, you know, this, this remote work. And, and I'll say that, that these are prerequisites for me, right? It would be putting the cart before the horse for us to address or, or, or create, you know, this remote work environment when we're not adequately prepared from an IT perspective with a lot of these infrastructure issues to really support, you know, the, a healthy environment and, and make improvements on some of the deficiencies that really have been here for quite some time. And I won't read these, you know, I won't go down the list of these per se, but I do think that, that, you know, the last bullet in terms of, you know, establishing remote work technology protocols and resources is, is of particular importance because, you know, we can address the infrastructure and the systems and, and really create from a, a facilities perspective and from a, an asset perspective, like hard assets, computers and, and, and networks. But really addressing the personnel needs is something that, that dovetails and connects so strongly with, with the FICMAT recommendations, with what Dr. Warrenall shared with respect to, you know, the, the accreditation site visit observations. These are things that, that are inextricably linked, right? And so really ensuring that, that we have the capacity to sustain the support and create a healthy work environment that's going to translate to opportunities for our students is really important. Next slide, please. These are some of the HR benchmarks that we've discussed. And, you know, several of these things are negotiated items, right? They're things that we're going to need to have conversations with our bargaining units about. There are things that we don't really have answers to yet. Out of state employment, what does this mean for where an employee has to maintain permanent residence? There are certain issues that, that are still question marks for, I think, other districts across the state that would be question marks for us as well. I think the most important piece for me is ensuring that in making this transition, we would have all of the protocols in place to support our students, right? And ensuring that we have very clearly defined expectations for, for all employees that, that were equitable, that were fair, but at the same time did not disadvantage our students. That is a process that is very complicated. Again, having gone through this with Los Rios and, and spending several years really discussing some of these things. There's a lot of detail to be worked out. And then of course, some risk management and liability considerations, things that we would need to, to modify in terms of, of how we deliver training, you know, what our safety protocols would be. There's, you know, a lot of legal considerations wrapped up within that that we would need some resolution on. This is the piece that I think is, is in my conversations, I've, I've spoken with a lot of, a lot of people about this over the past few months or so. I think this is a piece that may be a little more intangible for some folks and, and difficult for them to wrap their heads around. Because the response that I've gotten when I've, you know, supported the return to work has largely been, well, we've been in, in a remote work environment for the past two years plus, right? Like what, what changed now? Why, you know, why is this a, a shift or a change now? Outside of, you know, the obvious response that we were in remote work protocols for safety, health and safety concerns. The other piece that I would really push back and challenge the college on is, well, you know, do we know how well we, we have been serving students in the remote environment? Because I, you know, I, I would challenge us to really be honest about, you know, whether the, the level of service and access that we have been able to maintain in this remote work environment has been adequate for our students and has really created opportunities for student success. And I would say without, you know, pointing fingers or casting dispersions that we have not. And I would say that, you know, that's been validated in, in connections and, and conversations that I've been having broadly with, with stakeholders around, you know, around the region, around our county, whether that be our partners in the, in the K through 12 districts or, you know, social service, health providers, different, different people that, that really I think are integral to promoting our student success and from the students themselves have really, you know, shared with us very directly and explicitly that access has been an issue throughout this pandemic. I think that we also need to be very intentional and, and, and have discussions around how a remote work policy or environment is going to create maximum effort or maximum outcomes rather for our students and really address some of the enrollment challenges that we have. And are we in a position as an institution to really grow and address some of the enrollment declines that we have? to be strategic around ways that we provide services, ways that we provide, you know, the courses we provide and the modalities that we provide? Are we in a position now to really say that that we can improve, you know, some of these things that that really have been on a downward downward trend? If we were to move forward in this in this timeframe now? Next slide. These are my proposed next steps, right? And I think I've been pretty transparent this whole meeting, right? That I I think we can get there as an institution. We just need to be very deliberate and intentional around what our specific benchmarks will be. And again, these are, these are also going to be accreditation issues because I think that you can point to, you know, pick, pick a theme or a main consideration on the campus. And I think they will, you know, the the status of IT, our enrollments, our campus climate and culture, our engagement or lack thereof with community, those are things that I think are impacting, you know, our our college success. And I think that us really being focused on establishing these benchmarks as a precursor for consideration of a remote work policy and more importantly, as a, you know, concerted effort towards us addressing some of the the information that just yesterday, the the accrediting team shared with us as being, you know, very pertinent issues we need to work on. I think that's very appropriate, and I think the sooner we address this, the better. You know, these are many of these benchmarks are things that, you know, we have capacity to to really address instant, not instantly, but now, you know, there are things, some of these are things we've been working on already. Our strategic enrollment plan is something we've been working on. A community reengagement plan with very intentional connections with our partners and the community. These are things that we've been working on. IT is is a, you know, every day there's progress on, you know, really improving some of the systems that again have been neglected for so long. So I will say that, you know, we are addressing these things and it's very possible and conceivable that in a short timeframe, we will be in a better position where we can really explore this. Now, we're aided, I think, in in many of the human resources and even some of the IT considerations. We're aided in the fact by the fact that there are other districts out there who've addressed some of these things already. And so we know it's possible, right? And these are just four that that we've looked at very briefly, you know, brief survey or 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 search brought up these four. And Catherine and I have had the chance to review all of these, these policies and think that, you know, a lot of the work that they've done, they've, you know, kind of set the stage for us. But, you know, the primary, I think, difference between some of these institutions and Napa Valley, quite frankly, are, you know, they're not dealing with some of the same IT issues and their their efforts to reengage and reconnect with their community are not the same as ours that need to do that. And so as I look at key benchmarks that would be the ones that would really be the dictating factors of when we would do this, it would be the capacity or capability for us to quickly address some of the IT considerations we have and a very strategic, thoughtful strategy for us to engage in enrollment management and community, you know, reengagement, establishing those relationships. And happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I I just want to say thank you for the report. I think you put a lot of thought into it and of course, this is your decision that we support fully. And, you know, thank you for explaining that, all the work that was put into it. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Trustee Luda, Trustee Iverson.
I I just think it's nice having identified some of the reasons that we are in the position to do this.
Trustee Baker.
I was just gonna say, I I think it's, I appreciate that we want to be thoughtful about this. And so rather than rushing to make a decision, it's better to wait till we're in a better position to move forward and, you know, with knowing exactly what we have to work with.
Thank you, Trustee Baker.
Yeah, and I agree with that too. And I think I suspect probably everybody in this room is supportive of the idea of a remote work policy. But I think that the those critical benchmarks that that you thoughtfully raised is exactly why. Good for us to reflect on anytime, you know, this discussion has been been brought up again, that we really need to focus on each one of these these benchmarks, especially when you're talking about community reengagement. Because I look, you know, upon about two and a half years in this remote work policy, I guess, environment that we did have. And it, I think it created, actually, we just weren't ready for it for a lot of reasons. And it created, I think, an even maybe perhaps more dysfunctional environment than we already had and really exacerbated the problems that we hadn't allowed a lot, many of the things to come to light, unfortunately. And I think as as many people have said over the way to address these issues, it's going to take time. You know, it's a big, Bobby mentioned, had very good analogies here, here and there, like a big barge. It's difficult to have it go around and 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 take time to to turn it around. And so we do, I completely agree and I like the thoughtful approach that you're talking about with these benchmarks. And so it's a good, you know, to to understand where we're going. We can always reflect on those benchmarks and until those those boxes are checked off, you know, I just don't think the campus is ready for that. So I appreciate everybody in Charlotte and your team too, putting together, I think, all the issues that we need to address so it's done in the best way that works for the college, the community and our students. Thank you. We will go to our consent calendar. And I would welcome a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Trustee Rios.
Second, and then just noting that we had moved 12.2 to the consent calendar too.
Correct, correct. We have a second from Trustee Iverson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopt a consent unanimously and moving on to 12.1, our annual notification of the student right to know, our Clary Report. Chief Wade.
Good evening, Board. I am here to present our annual Clary Report. Good thing is there is not a whole lot to present, so that's a good thing when we're talking about crime statistics. If you'll see here, this does bring back our information for the past three years. The majority you'll see throughout our report is basically our our reporting procedures, safety information, prevention and resources available on our campus. Catherine, if you want to scan all the way down to page 18. So our annual security report or Clary Report, student right to know report has multiple names, has to be published and sent out before October 1st. So hopefully you all received it a couple of weeks ago. We send it out using our NBC safe and then also an all staff email. And thanks to Holly and her team, we send it out over social media as well. We want everyone to to know these procedures and see the crime statistics on our campus. You'll see an increase in in some of our information up there. Granted, comparing it to 2020 is a little different because it was a complete remote work environment. So there was not a lot happening on our campus. Catherine, if you can scan down just a little bit. So there's a couple categories. Page 16, you're on 18. There we go. So there's on campus, public property and our non-campus centers. On campus is here at Napa Valley College. Public property is Kennedy Park. So that's it's property around our campus. So those statistics are representing basically Kennedy Park. And the non-campus centers are our classrooms in American Canyon High School. So this is an accumulation of not just on campus crime statistics, but also we reach out to our local law enforcement agencies that cover those areas and get those crime statistics as well. Just a couple of things to highlight. You'll see on our campus that we did have a decrease in burglaries. However, it's not a decrease in break-ins. So if someone breaks into an area and nothing is missing, then we call it more of a vandalism. And our staff have gotten smart over the years and we are not storing things in like sheds outside. We're keeping them inside and so we're not getting as many losses and that made our crime statistic there go down. So that's a good thing. That's our staff learning and adjusting for for really the environment where we're dealing with. We did have a domestic violence arrest on campus. However, that was two of our local transient populations that came onto campus. So none of our crime statistics were actual students on campus. It involved either visitors or our local transient population. And then if you look over, let's see, we did have a drug violation. Again, that did not involve a student on campus. It was a visitor that possibly was a transient. You'll see a large increase in the 2021 statistics within our community, specifically Kennedy Park. And that's not unexpected because we have a large homeless population there and an encampment. And so that's something that I know that the city is dealing with. The good thing is we just haven't seen a lot of that crime run over into the college. And and that's really thanks to police presidents and patrol. But also I think it's our staff and student awareness and and them reporting suspicious activity to us on campus. That's really huge. And also our staff, specifically our custodial crew locking up. So we don't have areas that are in use or not in use being unlocked where people can just walk in to those areas. And then if you want to continue on, Catherine. Yeah, keep going. We did not have any reported hate crimes or unfounded crimes, so things that we're investigating but but could not prove for this year. And then if you will scan on down, we also do a report for Upper Valley Campus. And that includes our on campus Upper Valley and then public property, which is anything within the surrounding area. And there's a big apartment complex there that we get their crime statistics from St. Helena PD. This is actually the first year we've had a long time that there has been one statistic, and I believe it was a weapons violation. However, that did not involve anyone on our campus. Again, this is our our statistics. These are available online and sent out to everyone and it's done yearly. Do you have any questions or anything? Yeah.
So I know the development is taking or in place down the the way here that, and I would like to hope that this stuff isn't going to increase, but I just really want to know that we're doing what we need to do in preparation for more students on campus and what that's going to involve bits more officers or. But men.
Absolutely. You know, we have been doing quite a bit of planning for that within our our college police department. We've been working on additional training with our Napa District Attorney's Office for investigating different types of assaults or domestic violence, child abuse, that type of thing. And we are slowly working to go towards 24 hour coverage on campus. And that will hopefully decrease some of our property crimes that are happening when we're not here on campus. And there, when you look at other campuses, there will be an increase in statistics because we have people living on our campus. However, we can also counterbalance that with an extreme education. You know, they're going to be, our people on campus will have that that opportunity to give them all of the classes for crime prevention and and also have focus and partnerships with our community resources to get them out here on our campus and and work with our 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 community that's living on campus.
And Trustee Iverson, if I could jump in here also, Chief Wade has presented with us a a proposal in a draft budget in that transition to, you know, a 24 hour campus that that outlines a timeline for us to, you know, increase officer presence. That's something that VP Reeves and I are are looking at, considering also figuring out ways for us to address that within our operational budget as well.
The transient population, obviously, and the amount of homelessness and that's going to increase when we have more population on campus, I guess, with housing. Does it bring in more?
We will have an increased crimes of opportunity presence, just with more vehicles and and people on campus. And and really, I think we counterbalance that with education and and patrol presence.
Thank you, Chief Wade. And it's good to know too, that how proactive you are. I didn't know that you guys already had met and you put together a timeline. So I really appreciate it. Speak for everybody that appreciating that proactive approach. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Catherine, do we have any public comment too, just while we're at it? All right. Chief Wade, thank you very much.
Then we will move to what is now 12.2, our annual 311 report.
And? Thank you. We continue to look at that, but there are several contributing factors that we need to look at structurally if we're going to take take some real, get some real headway here. I'll share with you that last year we we did not meet it as well. We do not, like other institutions, a portion of enforcement based institutions are not subject to a financial penalty because we are a community based district. We did, however, file a an application for waiver to the Board of Governors this year just so that we could be on record as recognizing that as a particular challenge and and letting the Board of Governors know that 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 was a real challenge for us and that we will be addressing that. So that is one of the takeaways from the 311 report that was issued. I will, I do want to acknowledge the contributions of our accounting team, Wendy Nocho, Doug Roberts and David Prince, our entire accounting team. This report, because it was so delayed last year, gave stimulus to the Chancellor's Office to send the FICMAT after us. This is one of the reasons. We filed this about three weeks before the deadline this year and the numbers work for us. We have a balanced budget, we have a contribution to reserves and but for the fact of a few indicators, including the 50% law, I think you'll find confirmed by the by the audit that we are in improving shape. So at that, I will certainly entertain any questions on the 311. Again, the Audit Committee, the Audit and Finance Committee will see more of this in the form of the audited financial statements a little later this year.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Any questions from the board? Catherine, do we have any public comment? Okay, well, this is an action item, so I'd welcome a motion.
Second.
Both items. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? I'm going to approve this annual 311 report unanimously and move to our unrestricted general fund 11 update.
I'm back. Catherine, would you mind pulling up the, there you are. And are you driving, Catherine? Thank you. Let me, let me orient you to this report. This is what we call a fund 11 report. It is our unrestricted revenues and expenses, unrestricted. It's because the institution has the latitude to use these resources based on their decision making processes to advance the mission of the institution in ways that they determine best. We do have restricted funds largely in. We do have restricted funds largely in what we call Fund 12. We are going to focus on Fund 11 here. This is, well, we won't give you a Fund 12 report tonight. Fund 11 is what we are measured on in terms of financial viability, the largest measure. So can you give me a little magnification there, Catherine? Let me orient you to this report. The far-left column, we've added a column of numbers just to help us reference the lines. That's a little different from last year. So the next column to the right is, are the descriptors of revenues and expenditures throughout the report. The next column to the right, you'll see the top, it says audited fiscal year 1920. So what we are attempting to show you are your ability to look at trends of expenditures and revenues over the course of now three years. So those two columns on the left are both audited. You'll see as you move to the right, the green shaded column. These are pre-audited actuals for the fiscal years just concluded June 30th. It was three months ago, I guess, concluded June 30th, excuse me, 22. These are pre-audited numbers. We don't change them to audited until the auditor says they're audited. And then they become the firm number that we use, we'll keep in this. And my intention is to keep three years of audited financials on this report so that you can more easily determine what the trends look like. Moving to the right is the board-approved budget, the current budget that you approved last month. To the right is the prior-year actuals for three months. So the top, the title of this report is for period three. So this is at the end of September. Our fiscal year, as you may know, begins on July 1 of each year and concludes on June 30th. So this is the end, this report is for the end of the third period or the first quarter, if you will. So these are our actuals for the third period in this year. And if you move over one more column, Catherine. We have provided a column that says, what, what did we spend? Excuse me, go back one to the left, I'm sorry. This is three months for the period, the same period last year. Three months for the same period last year. We move one to the right, one column to the right. This is the current three months, the end of the third period. So what we tried to do here is show you where we were at this point last year. And again, it's a comparison. And then the far-right column is what we call the variance column. Thank you, Catherine. The clear column on the right. What we're attempting to show you is what's the difference between last year and this year? I would offer that this is the column, if you're taking a quick look at these reports, this is the column you want to focus on because this tells you where we are relative to where we are last year. I would also add a footnote here. I'm working with our finance team to change the methodology for this variance report so it more clearly demonstrates how we are doing today relative to the budget you adopted as opposed to how we were this time last year. Okay, let's, I'm just going to go down the lines here. Let's go to the first variance report on the far right where it says revenue. And you'll notice it's a negative number, $1,409,345. That does not mean that we're, we're short on, on cash. It just means it's a timing issue. The money has not arrived yet as of September 30th. Or in some cases, it may not have been posted yet. But our report deadline, that was where we were sitting. I'll share with you on a cash flow basis, we've been working very diligently with the Chancellor's Office and others to be sure we had enough cash. We will have an inflow of cash, a fairly dramatic inflow of cash this fall that will include larger apportionment contributions from the state in addition to some portion of that $31 million grant for student housing. So that'll be devoted to student housing. But on a short-term cash basis, we will be in very good shape this fall, which has historically been a challenge for institutions like ours that need to wait for those cash receipts to come from property taxes in typically December. So that explains the 1.4 million short, we're short in revenue. Let's move down to the next subtitle. I can't see the line numbers on the left, Catherine. It is line 16, total salaries. And, and let's move over to the far-right side here. So in total salaries, we are trending about $534,000 better than we did at this time last year. One of the reasons is that in our faculty salaries, our top-line salaries, we're trending a little light there because there's some deferred salaries because of faculty contracts. So you may recall the faculty had a raise of 9%. That 9% actually begins in August, it doesn't begin in July. And so you'll see, you're seeing a fairly positive variance there. You're also seeing a positive variance as compared to last year in our part-time salaries at $250,000. So we are certainly compared to last year, we're trending very positively at $534,000. Can we move down to line 25, which is employee benefits? And then over to the variance, I'm making this hard on you, Catherine, then to the right side. So line 25 is total employee benefits. We're trending positively compared to last year at about $10,000. Line 31, the another, the next subcategory, we're trending positively compared to last year at this point at $103,000. And I'm moving down fairly quickly to, to line 42, total other operating supplies. Line 42, we're trending positively compared to last year at about $977,000. Other outgoing transfers were negative of $118,000. That is just a timing issue. Under other outgo, lines 45 and 46, other outgo, interfund transfers and OPEB, one of those acronyms we'll put in the glossary of terms. We have not posted much there. So you'll see there, there, there isn't much in current, there is nothing in current actuals. So compared to last year, we're running at about $1,728 better, better than we did last year. And also remember, we're $1,400,000 short on the revenue. So that's contributing to that, that we would be $3 million plus on the better side if the revenues were hitting at the same as they did last year. We still have some delayed postings, OPEB and other transfers have not posted for the period yet. So that will adjust this as well. So in short, the takeaway here is that we're progressing generally as we had planned or as the budget you adopted expects. We'll continue to see some, some adjustments in our, in our variance column as we put a finer point to comparing that, our expenditures to your, to the adopted budget. So that would conclude my remarks on the Fund 11 budget for the period ending September 30th.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Trustee Baker?
I make more work for you and also for Catherine in terms of the swiping back and forth. But I love the, the variance and the comparison of the, where we are last, this year to last year. The one thing I would like to see to make it a little easier to understand is that when you're comparing just whole numbers, it's a little bit confusing or not confusing, but it's, it's not, it's not a true picture because the amount that's actually adopted is different. And so, so I'm wondering if we can make that into a percentage rather than a whole number. So like you could say, okay, this, this year, in three months, we were at 12%. And we, and last year, at the same time, we were at 17%. So that, because that would make it a little bit more of apples to apples.
Trustee Baker, that's exactly where we're, what we're talking about in our, with our finance team. To give you a clearer picture, based on a percentage, we are, we are technically 25% through our budget. And so to your point, we want to demonstrate that what is 25% of your adopted budget look like? And how does that compare to our actual? So we're right on the same page with you. Thank you.
That's nice to hear. Any other questions or comments?
My question is just on the receiving the receipts for the property taxes. Like, is it a set schedule? Is it anticipated? Like, is there?
The county gives us a schedule of when taxes, when they expect them to be received. And then that's slightly different when it actually gets posted to our accounts. So there's always a little bit of, you know, certainly in years past, I think a lot of holding our breath to make sure it gets posted to our accounts that we can draw on. So I wouldn't say, they don't give us, you can count on us at 12 noon on December 1st. They don't give us that. We would like to get that, that would certainly help.
They receive it and then release it?
Yes, that's exactly right. This year, as I mentioned, I don't anticipate any cash flow challenges based on what I'm hearing from the Chancellor's Office and those, those funds coming our way.
No, I was just wondering, I thought my statement said my taxes aren't due till December 10th or something. So there's no way we would know on December 1st.
Trustee Rios, if you could pay your taxes a little earlier, maybe we could get our receipts.
I don't believe you just recommended that.
Thank you. Catherine, do we have any public comment? We'll move to 12.5, a resolution establishing Fund 29, Other Debt Service Fund.
Fund 29 is a request to establish a separate fund to fund debt service. And it is a way for the institution and the district to segregate those funds that we will dedicate to debt service. The, the intention for this particular fund at this time is that you may recall that we have up to a $650,000 subordinated liability for the residential program. This is, this is a way for us to begin to drop a few dollars in there every year or a few thousand dollars, $100,000 each year so that we have that in place in the event that we ever needed, ever needed to draw on it. And we didn't have to necessarily rely on our Fund 11 budget to meet that obligation.
Any questions or comments? Catherine, do we have any public comment on this? So action item, welcome a motion. Thank you, Trustee Rios and Trustee Baker, all in favor? Any opposed? Approved unanimously. Another action item, 12.6, re-roofing building 1200 through Garland DBS Incorporated.
Thank you, Trustee Dodd. This is one of our roof replacement projects. It is on campus, building 1200. It is funded by, by state block grant funding. It's from, for, it's from the Scheduled Maintenance Fund provided by the state. We received in, for last year. We received something over $1 million for scheduled maintenance. This is a portion of that that we will devote to replacing this roof, which is a bit overdue.
This is accounted for in our, in our current budget, but it was monies that we received last year?
That's correct. It's, it's actually sitting in Fund 12 today because it's restricted to scheduled maintenance.
Thank you. Catherine, do we have any public comment before we jump in? We do have a motion from Trustee Iverson and a second from Trustee Goff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approve the contract unanimously and move on to now information item 12.6, discussion on our categorical programs, grant-funded and non-grant-funded.
I'd like to call your attention to the schedule we provided in, on the agenda, which is a summary of all of the categorical and some grant-funded opportunities that colleges in receipt of this year. Solange in my office was good enough to take the compendium from the Chancellor's Office, which listed all of the, all the districts in the state and pulled out the Napa College piece of this. And so what it does, as you can see, is it outlines the categorical area that is intended to fund, the amount, and some background for what the legislation is supporting it and how it's to be used. And then we added on the right column, the responsible party on our campus and who has signature authority and who will develop the program, the budget and, and the reporting for this. I bring this to your attention because it represents just short of $20 million that the college will receive from the state this year for a whole variety of programs that, that support student engagement, persistence, program support. There's $6 million in there this year for scheduled maintenance, for technology support, et cetera. So I'm not going to read every line to you clearly. But I did want to bring to your attention the kind of support being provided to, to the institution, to the district, to our students from, from the state in the form of categorical funds. This is not Fund 11 funds. These are all Fund 12 funds. These are dedicated for specific purposes and certainly leverage the institution's the institution's responsibility to, to advance equity and justice and meet program and, and facilities needs.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
They sit in a Fund 12 and they are accounted for in the budget. I think we need to do a more thorough job of, of developing budgets and do some what's called braiding of budgets to make sure that we leverage these funds to maximum effectiveness. So I think this will help that conversation. But they have been recorded and reflected in Fund 12. I think we can do a better job of braiding these funds with, with other sources to, to leverage their effectiveness, however.
Sure. Trustee Rios?
Is this where I saw that there was some money for part-time instructors?
Yes.
So I have a question about that. So there's, they're going to provide additional money for that. But what happens to our budget in the future when this money is gone? And those instructors, you know, got more money for this year from, from these funds?
Well, that's the two-edged sword of, of funding in some cases is that you receive it and at some point in some programs, the states, as we like the institution to be able to plan to, to assume these expenses moving forward. So I don't know the details of the, the part-time funding piece, but typically the state is saying, or the grantor is saying, you have a period of time to absorb these into your general fund.
If I can jump in on that one also, I think that your point, Trustee Rios, is well-received that this, this really highlights the importance for us as an institution to be very intentional with our strategic planning and to think in the long term as the Chancellor's Office over the course of the past eight years or so has really transitioned more systemic, you know, consistent funding sources in 11 over to Fund 12, right? And have essentially increased and boosted that, that Fund 12. But it's come in a, in a more volatile funding stream, which I think necessitates us to be very deliberate and intentional when we make long-term commitments, especially on personnel, right? And be very deliberate about, you know, what our capacity to really address some of these categorical programs are and how we can maximize and leverage our existing resources, whether they be personnel-based or other resources. So we're not placing the college in a position where in, in bad budget years or where, you know, there's switches or change at the state level, at the governor's level and funding, correspondingly, funding shifts, that we're in a position where we can no longer sustain ourselves. Really important for a college this size because we don't have that flexibility to just absorb some of these costs in, in lean budget years. So it's very much on our mind as we engage in this next, you know, thought or this next process of what our strategic planning process is going to look like and making sure that these are values that inform how we build future budgets going forward, on the categorical side as well.
That, that was my concern, that we're left with short on our budget. That was my concern, that we're left with short on our budget after these funds are gone. So I'm happy to hear that you're already thinking about that. Thank you.
I would conclude by indicating that this has been a very robust year in terms of funding from the state of California. Every indication that we're seeing and hearing is this will not continue. And that property taxes are in decline or corporate income taxes are in decline. And that we should not expect this level of funding certainly into the foreseeable future. So we certainly want to take advantage of this opportunity, but also plan responsibly so we don't over commit ourselves.
To that end, Jim, have we done effectively an audit of, you know, the ongoing grants that we have right now and looking to, you know, next year and seeing where we're probably going to lose some fund? I know you don't have a crystal ball, but just trying to look into the future where we should be thinking about those kinds of things now instead of a year from now.
In January is our first indication from the governor that will provide us some insight to what we can expect in categorical funding. Grant funding is a bit different because in terms of, in many grant-funded programs, there's an expectation that the institution will continue the programming well beyond the end date for the grant. And I would offer that we need to be very careful about the terms and conditions that we accept grants and take on grants and understand fully what the implications are for taking the money and implementing these programs and understand what the longer-term implications are.
And so with that, and just to ask, and Dr. Powell, is that what you're talking about? I think in terms of an institutional plan, those types of policies and whatnot would be located in that document.
Yes, absolutely. One of the components that actually, I wouldn't be surprised if it made an appearance in our accreditation recommendations is the consolidation of strategic planning and particularly grant application management and data and research, research and data collection into, you know, one office, essentially. So we have a formal process to assess whenever we go out for, you know, additional grant funding opportunities from the feds or from the state. Right now, that's something that is, a college is a growth area for us. And it's not to disparage the work because I think the grants that we've been able to successfully acquire are value-added for our students, of course. The question is, you know, what happens when that funding source does dry up? And what are we able to preserve? So that is absolutely what I was referencing, President Dodd, that having more strategic, you know, planning connected to the pursuit of some of these resources is absolutely on our radar.
Thank you, thank you both.
Categorical funding, the presentation here, we don't believe most of it will dry up. As Dr. Powell indicated, the chancellor's office has moved discretionary funding into categorical funding to meet particular objectives for student achievement and outcomes. We don't believe that the categorical funding, I'll speak for myself, the indicators are the categorical funding won't go away. The amounts awarded will likely be in decline. So we need to look very carefully at what commitments we make today so that we can support programming into the future with likely fewer of these, less of these categorical funds.
Thank you very much. It was really helpful to have that. Appreciate that proactive approach and presenting that to the board. We'll move to item 13.1. It's a first reading of our board policy manual. Noting on this item, we have some suggested policy changes presented by the president's office. And then also amongst that are a review of the board policies that the president's office is suggesting that we don't need any revisions to, but we'd like to confirm that all trustees have reviewed them. And I'm seeing everyone nod their heads that they have. So just moving on to first reading of the board policies that we are proposing amendments to, do we have any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Rios?
Yes. The policy that talks about the agenda items. I forget which number that is.
BP 2340.
One of the changes there is that it looks like we struck out or proposing to strike out that we, some language that said that we, someone to get an item that's presented at the board meeting onto the agenda required, you know, at least a, what was it? A, what was the term? A something minority, a strong minority or?
And this is actually an AP, excuse me, this is AP 2340.
It's our board policy. We're striking it out and I think it says, the suggested language now says that the board member, we wouldn't do this at a board meeting anymore, but requests would come to the president, to the president's office and the chair. We spent, I don't know how many years ago, feels like we spent a year on developing these policies, especially on the agenda because we had issues with certain board members wanting all kinds of things and demanding all kinds of things on the agenda. And with counsel, we worked through that to come up with that policy and that language to prevent, you know, one board member from being able to put everything they wanted on an agenda. It seems like eliminating that and saying that that board member can just take it to the president or the chair will automatically get that on the agenda, assuming, you know, it's within our purview and those other things. So I'm a little concerned about removing that. I mean, it's things that come onto the agenda. It's, we're supposed to have some kind of, if not a majority of the, I didn't find the language right here, but I haven't really looked, but it's. Do you see it?
It is, it's one of the APs that would be.
So.
So I think comment noted. I don't know if we have any comment. And trustee Baker, is it on this item?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was just gonna, kind of going back to when we were discussing this, I think it was four or five years ago. Originally, I believe there wasn't a mechanism, a clear mechanism for a board member to get something onto an agenda. And so that was one of the reasons why that got, became such an issue. So as long as there's a means to do it, I don't really have a. I guess my question is, does this mean that the future agenda items piece of the agenda would go away and then we would only just be doing it this way?
That was my understanding of the proposed changes.
And that's what it looks like to me. So if there's any other, just two trustees have lived through those original amendments. Trustee Goff?
I wasn't on the board at that time, but I clearly remember this as an issue. There was accusations that a trustee could not get their item on the agenda because the president of the board would not recognize the item. And so I agree that while that's not probably an issue at this point, I would not want to get rid of the process. That was so well-vetted, as trustee Rios brought up, to avoid that in future board settings. So I would encourage us to adopt the old language that was argued and argued and argued and vetted legally and just put it in place just to make sure that that situation doesn't arise again.
Very, very helpful. I think what I'd do, go ahead, trustee.
Is to clean it up a little bit too. I mean, not necessarily having it on the agenda piece of our agenda, but to eliminate, because we got a pretty lengthy list too in the past and they weren't getting moved forward. So I think it's more or less trying to streamline what's getting put on there too. And the process.
Well, I have a fabulous idea. We have a new ad hoc committee that is going to get together and discuss AP 2340. And the members of that ad hoc committee are trustee Baker, trustee Rios, and trustee Iverson. They, all very good, all very good and helpful comments. Any other comments on the other board policies? Generally speaking, very good comments. I'm not, that was not tongue-in-cheek at all. Any other comments on board policies? Okay, seeing none?
We elect the chair of the ad hoc.
That would constitute a quorum and would be impermissible under the Brown Act. So I would, cannot agree to such a thing.
Just a leader.
We'll move to 14, reports item 14 on our agenda and move first to our new president of our associated students, Priya Sharma. Thank you so much for joining us this evening and stepping up to this very demanding job. We're very lucky to have you. You know, I think it'd be wonderful, maybe, we don't know you all that well, so tell us a little bit about yourself. It'd be great to get to know you a little bit better. And you are on mute. There you go.
Thank you, and hello, my name is Priya Sharma. I was appointed ASNBC president literally last Friday, so I'm still getting kind of used to everything. So I'd appreciate it if you guys are a bit patient with me. But yeah, I'm very excited to be a part of this team.
Thank you so much, Priya. We'll go to 14.3, our classified Senate report, Danielle Alexander. Is she remote today?
I don't see her present.
Okay. We will go on to our classified association, President Dixie Larson.
I was here earlier, I don't see her present.
Okay, we'll go to our administrative confidential Senate report. I do know we have somebody here for that.
Live and in person.
And thank you for being here.
Just like on Zoom, now that I'm unmuted. President Dodd, members of the board, I'm very pleased by the continuing follow-up to the collegiality and action visited conducted jointly by the State Academic Senate and the League for California Community Colleges. Your administrative senate leadership is, looks forward to participating and continuing discussions around effective governance and policies and procedures. We also look forward to continued momentum around the various administrative procedures that have been pending for some time and require action, particularly those that impact our students. The commitment to collaboration and greater transparency is very welcome. You all know that this is accreditation week. And so I have to note that our senate gives out an administrator confidential employee of the year award in the spring of each year. But if we gave out an administrator of the month award this month, it would undoubtedly go to Dr. Robin Warnall. Pulling together a successful site visit, of course, takes a village, but the villagers' efforts have to be coordinated. And Dr. Warnall and her staff did a masterful job. Hundreds of documents have to be gone through with thousands of pages that have been reviewed, multiple drafts circulated and ultimately finalized, as well as coordinating all of the logistics around a visit. This is a huge undertaking and could not have happened without Dr. Warnall's leadership. On behalf of my fellow administrators, congratulations, Dr. Warnall. And you can go home and rest now. Thank you, President Dodd.
Well done, well done. And I don't believe we have a Dr. Dahada here either, or Kristi Wamato. So we will move right into president cabinet reports.
Thank you, President Dodd. We'll start with cabinet reports.
Good evening, board. It's on a word, yeah, that's right. Jim, you tested it for me, thank you. For this evening, I just, I provided a written document, but I just wanted to go over a few points with it, for it, with you. We're in the midst of guided pathways gaining some traction. You may recall that last year, there was six guided pathways that were, exploration pathways that were identified, visual design and performing arts, entrepreneurship and management, human services and health, science and industrial technology, people, culture and society, and then a general all-studies pathway. These pathways will be designed to allow students to come together in community, learning communities and affinity groups so they can group together and then get on pathways that will get them to their determined goal, whether that be an associate's degree, transfer, et cetera. Over the summer, there was a group of folks, faculty, staff and administrators who attended this guided pathway, CCRC Summer Institute, to set the course moving into the future. Dr. Powell, as he came in, said he's doing some good work, but it's time for some action. And we were setting together goals to set plans. So we will be ready to welcome our Fall '23 cohort of students in their pathways. And to that end, we believe, to quote Captain Picard from Star Trek, we are in the mode now to make it so. So our first guided pathway student-facing activity is being planned and will take place with the virtual design and performing arts pathway cohort in November. Senior Dean Bob Vander Veld and the folks at our, are planning to host the inaugural events to get the students together, bring people, faculty, staff together and start the pathway process. So I do believe that might be the first official student-facing pathway activity. Earlier this evening, we heard Patricia Munzami, Dr. Munzami, discuss about, discuss some about the SEA, Student Equity, Accessible, Excess, excuse me, grant process and plan. Coupled with that is a strategic enrollment management task force that is working as well. And in outlining Dr. Powell's words this evening also, the task force is working to address multiple enrollment issues, pathways to get students easily enrolled and registered in classes. We are working this year, this year to set formal plans with the task force that we can put into action so we can make these things come to fruition. And so you don't have to go through, you don't have to have a doctorate to apply to the college. So those processes are in place. Also going on right now is the Institutional Effectiveness Partnership Initiative that was, has been in process for about a year and a half. Dr. Parker and Dr. Dahada put this together. The academic senate is working to create cultural responsive pedagogy, among other very vital aspects for training. We anticipate having a site visit for our partnership resource team in either late November or December. We did delay that a bit and with the blessing of the group of the PRT, just gave them some dates today. So that's ongoing. Something that most people don't know about that is occurring at the academic affairs level is something called Courseleaf, which is a, which is a three-pronged or a three-headed monster, if you will, that is tied to our IT challenges. But we have curriculum management and the faculty would tell you we have currently, what we have now is something called CurriculumNet, which is not very intuitive and user-friendly. The college has engaged the curriculum management process and program, as well as a catalog process to make things easier, integrated. And the last part of that is something called Class, which is a scheduling module. These are all worked together and the scheduling will get away from Excel spreadsheets and move them into innovative and dynamic processing where we can manage rooms, personnel and facilities. So that's wonderful. Something that I just added this evening real quick that I hadn't, I forgot to do earlier in my report, is on November 4th, we are hosting, Napa Valley Colleges hosting, the Human Patient Simulation Network by CAE. Now, CAE is a company that provides, it works, they're a Canadian company that does lots of different, they're diversified, if you will. But we purchased some of our high-fidelity simulators from them last year. You all approved some pretty significant purchases via grant funds. And we are hosting, but they claim to be an international program on November 4th. It begins at 7:30 in the student center and then be moving to the 1200 building. We expect between 50 and 100 educators, partners in simulation technology, physicians, nurse, midwives, et cetera. We have our, some of our faculty will be, who've worked in. nurse midwives, et cetera. We have our, some of our faculty will be, who've worked in nursing program and our EMS program will be presenting there about the value of the simulation has done for them. At lunch, Philip Murphy with our VWT program will be doing a wine presentation. And then at the end of the day, we will be, they will be hosting a wine social with Napa Valley wines for the last hour. So that's something that, that sort of flew under the radar, but it came up, it came up quickly. So we're looking forward to that. But you know, we hope to get 100 people from all over, all over the area. It's advertised nationally. And then last but not least, I think each of you received tomorrow, an invitation tomorrow at 10:00 AM in the, the Performing Arts Center is the pending ceremony for our fast track psychiatric technician program. I think it developed, I think it was sent out to you. That's the program that we, it's an apprenticeship program. We've partnered with Napa State Hospital, Department of State Hospitals. That's tomorrow at 10:00 AM. So if you're able to make it, you had, I believe you received the invitation earlier. So we'd love to see if you're able to make it. It's about an hour. So that concludes my report.
No, there we go. Okay. Good evening, Board of Trustees, colleagues and, and community. Well, just really again, just actually adding to BP Harris's report, especially around the guide pathways. It's, I'm excited to announce that Napa Valley College has been awarded a Title V Federal Hispanic Serving Institution Grant, HSI Grant. This is spearheaded by Senior Dean Robin Dargangelo, Senior Manager Chris Farmer, and our consultant, Dr. Victoria Heinz. They really took the lead in writing the, the grant that was awarded to us for the, it's $2.9 million over the extent of five years. So this is a big, big support for us, especially around distance education, improving our guide pathways and expanding what we're doing in guide pathways. This is really going to help to support the work that, that was just discussed by BP Harris, in addition to our IT. So we have some now support to throw into the IT area, which is critical, as we know. All of this really guided around equity. So what do we need to do to really support our most, our most marginalized students? In particular, this is focused on our Hispanic Latinx communities and other groups. So that's a huge, we're very excited about that. And, and a big thank you to, to the folks I mentioned around their, their heavy lifting and work around, around getting this grant, which I think is going to be a huge, well, it's going to make changes for our campus. And it's pivotal and important, especially in this, in this time. Specifically what this grant's going to do, it's going to increase degrees, certificates earned by NBC students, in particular, Hispanic Latinx students, increase distance education enrollment, increase the number of students completing their guided pathways within two years, and reduce the number of students, especially our Hispanic Latinx students on academic probation. So again, much props to, to our, our support who put this together, Senior Dean Robin Dargangelo, I want to say their name again, Senior Manager Chris Farmer, and our consultant, Dr. Victoria Heinz. So I want to lift it up for them. Moving on, very excited to, to announce that we've been very, very busy in student affairs as far as our, our visits. We've, we, our, our high school visits in particular, we've been going out to all the local high schools. So when I say local, I mean schools in the American Canyon, all the way up to Sinalina. We have Calistoga planned for next week. What is the goal of these, these visits? Our goal has been as a student affairs team, so representatives from, from our counseling faculty to admissions and records, the Puente Program, DSPS, financial aid, Mesa STEM, enrollment as well. So we're, we've been working closely with academic affairs on this piece, camino hasta el éxito, in my office to go to our high schools, make connections, talk to our high school counselors, talk to administrators, and really build that, that, that bridge again with, with our community. Like Dr. Powell mentioned earlier, this area we need to do a lot of work in. So we're very cognizant of that and very, very intentional about making sure we get into the high school spaces and, and rebuild our partnerships. So very excited about that. Many connections have already been made, really important connections from presentations to classes at the high school to really building our robust or a robust dual enrollment program. So it's an exciting thing we're, we're working on. With all that said, culminating in, so plan, plan it now. So on your calendars, November 17th, our high school breakfast. So we're going back to the, to the burritos and the, the good food that we, we've had in the past. That will be, I think, I believe it's from 11, or it'll be early in the morning around 7:30 to around 11 o'clock. So you'll get an official invite if you haven't already around that. So that's going to be an opportunity for our partners to come to campus, on campus and, and connect with us. So we're very, very excited about that opportunity as well coming. Couple of other brief announcements or just kind of to get you up to speed on around transfer center in particular, that currently right now, the transfer center is, is involved with really supporting the transfer admission guarantee program. So our counselors have been involved in making sure our students are developing their transfer mission guarantee. What does this mean? Guarantees to the University of California a year before they even apply. So go. So that's, that's exciting. And counselors are very, very busy doing that and getting that, that ready for students. That actually ends in mid-October. So they've been working since, since September to, to set up the tags for students. We are also busy in our transfer center organizing our, our historically black colleges and universities, HBCU caravan. That'll be on campus, October 27th, on the, in the quad. So 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock, you are invited to, to attend. We really are waiting and hoping to have lots of students come to our campuses. 20 to 29 universities have already been, like 29 actually have already said they're going to come. So we're going to have lots of students, lots of universities here, lots of opportunities for students. In addition to that, what we're doing is we are working with our school district to, to provide buses, to provide buses for all of our schools to be able to bring students to campus and experience NBC, HBCUs caravan. So that's an exciting thing as well. Our career center has been extremely busy. We, they actually helped us to have an NBC Hispanic chamber mixer here on campus a couple of weeks back. You may have attended that. It was a great opportunity to, to network with Napa County Chamber of Commerce folks and to really show off what NBC is doing in, in our programs. On October 5th, we had a job fair here on campus, which really was around hiring diverse workforce, in particular, our, our students with disabilities and our communities with disabilities. So that was highlighting that. And then I'm going to just end, there's more, I have a lot to actually report out, but it's all in my report that I gave to you. You do have a hard copy. So we're going old school here, a hard copy of the student affairs annual report for 2122. Please review that and I'm happy to talk to you more about that at a different point. But thank you. And that was my report.
Onto administrative services. I would just call your attention briefly to my report. Just a few items. I believe I covered most of it in previous reports. The institutional technology, I just wanted to give you an update on where we are there. Daniel Vega, who happens to be here this evening, making sure everything is plugged in, has been leading the charge in our IT recovery. I will share with you that some days we are limping, some days we are jogging, but we are not in full stride yet. And that's going to require and has, we've been working in lots of respects to, to borrow a phrase from DC, build back better. And that takes a little time and some reconfiguration, et cetera. But it is a painful restoration process, as money will tell you. We are making some significant investments in our IT infrastructure, not only our infrastructure, but our student and faculty facing devices. We have money, HERF money, about $1.7 million that we will spend this year, in addition to CARES funding from the state, in addition to, I noted before, categorical funding. Several of those areas have IT investments that can be made to help leverage our IT improvements across the campus. So I want to assure you that we, this is underway and moving forward. We also met with Alucion, who is the provider of our enterprise software, the software that is the backbone of our student engagement, of our accounting, et cetera. We met with them about 10 days ago and we are, we are working with them to, to establish a go-live date at which all of this will be pushed to the cloud, right, Daniel? That provides additional security and, and reliability for our, our primary enterprise system. So we are making progress there and I certainly wanted to keep you apprised of that and acknowledge Daniel and his team for their, for the marathon they've been running to keep us alive and, and address the, the, the issues that come up every day. Housing, an update on student housing. I'd like to report that we are moving briskly ahead, actually. And anecdotally, I would share with you, I'm hearing that they are a bit ahead of schedule. There is a camera on top of the PAC, which takes pictures several times a day. So you get a time lapse approach. Trustee Iverson, I don't know if we had that geyser in this picture yet, but trustee Iverson saw a geyser one day and reported it. We were able to address that fairly quickly.
Did he create it?
But we do have a camera. I have a link in my report and we'll put it on the, on the housing website. So you can take a picture firsthand. We, we are in the process of pushing out what we call a request for qualifications to establish a list of folks and firms in two areas. One is project management. We want to engage a project manager that interacts with the housing program and the institution so that, so that our issues are represented fairly as well as the construction schedule issues. So we're looking at that. We're also looking for a construction manager, developing list for construction manager for the Wine Center, which I'll mention in just a moment. And that brings me to the Wine Center. We've had very constructive conversations with, with the Wine Spectator. And, and we thought, we think we're making great progress there. We're, we're adopting a phased approach to that building and construction program. You recall that the Wine Spectator has made a pledge of $10 million for a new Wine Center. So we, we will be taking on the responsibility for constructing, the cost of a construction manager there. And I think frankly, that helped grease the skids to, to move this forward. So at that, I would just refer you to my report, should you want to have more information. And that would conclude my report.
I don't, I don't, is this working? I don't know if I can top a geyser. We are currently recruiting for the following positions. These positions are vacant positions and they have been fully vetted and validated to meet the needs of, of our institution. Director, Student Health Services, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, President, Health Benefits Officer, Custodian, and Assistant Superintendent, Vice President of Academic Affairs. I want to focus on the Assistant Superintendent, Vice President of Academic Affairs. That position is currently posted and will be posted through November the 7th. We are anticipating and bringing a recommended candidate, recommending them for hire to the February 9th Board Meeting. January the 4th is the anticipated date for us to post our Assistant Superintendent, Vice President of Student Affairs. And we anticipate bringing a recommendation for hire to the May 11th Board of Trustees Meeting. Office of Human Resources and Training Development has worked very closely with Holly Dawson and her team in re-energizing our NBC Fridays. This was created pre-COVID with the idea of promoting the NBC brand and encouraging campus pride. In working with Holly Dawson, we've expanded this program to encourage all of our staff to come out not just wearing NBC gear, but also taking opportunities to go to different departments across our campus and engage with our colleagues, both faculty, classified professionals and administrators, and get a really good eyeful and understanding and appreciation of each other's work. I was privileged to join your, your, your staff at the PAC and got to see some behind the scene building of Beauty and the Beast. And just incredible work. And these are opportunities to be able to go behind the scenes, be able to ask questions and really see what our colleagues are doing across campus. This is a wonderful opportunity. Our next time for the NBC Friday will be October the 21st. This will be at the bookstore. So if you don't own any NBC gear, this is the perfect opportunity. Go to our bookstore. They also have a clearance rack. The following week it will be at the SIM lab. And that is one I definitely want to attend. We do rotate the times back and forth between 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM to allow other individuals in our community who have challenging schedules to participate. Also, we're also providing a ton of pictures and a ton of material for Holly to include in all of her wonderful communications. And of course, when we take our lunch on NBC Fridays, we're out in our community in many different areas, wearing NBC gear, reminding our community, we're here and we're here to support our students as well as our community. Additionally, we have rolled out Walktober. So we're in HR. We don't just focus on the recruitment, everything in between and retirement. We also focus on wellness. And so this is a program to encourage all members of our community, as well as family members, to join in and get your walking points in. So if you haven't got started, please start. Hopefully everyone has already signed up because the deadline has passed. And it is competitive. And for those of you who know me, I'm very, very competitive. We will have a celebration celebrating those who have reached their goals as a team, as, as well as individual goals on November the 15th. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
What time is the Friday one on the 21st?
10:00 AM to 10:15 AM in front of the bookstore. And don't forget the clearance rack.
And the last I looked, I was in the top five. Just saying. Good evening, trustees and colleagues and community members. Yeah, my team is the walkie-talkies, which seemed dapper though for Communications Department. I just have a brief update for you. There you can see yourselves. And I don't know why there's a little arrow. Oh, I, you know what? We're just going to, you want to press it and see? I'm not sure what that arrow might show. Go for it. Okay, then that one's not supposed to be there. Great. So this evening, just a little brief update. This is, that was a great picture of you all from our groundbreaking ceremony. And I just want to thank you for coming to that. We had a great turnout. She's moving a little fast for me, but that's okay. Oh, it's going by itself. Well, we'll just, I can talk really fast. It's probably going to play all of them at the same time. Quickly, you get the idea. At our last meeting, I shared with you that we were doing a lot of short form videos. And here are three examples. One is a recap of the groundbreaking ceremony. Another one is a fun video on our career fair. And then one was a how-to video on how to get your student ID. Okay, this one at the very end, and then I'm going to go backwards a little. It's kind of in the theme of what Jim Reeves was sharing earlier about a marathon. And I think he used limping and jogging. And so some of those limps and jogs have had a little bit of an effect on the website. Cause when the technology's down or our current website is down, that affects our ability to move forward with content migration and the work we're doing. I, the last board meeting, I shared with you that we would be up and running by now. And that was my hope and anticipation. And I usually like to under promise and over deliver, but there were things beyond control. The good news is, is that we The good news is, is that we really are almost there and it's looking beautiful. And we will be live before the end of the semester. We'll be, but I'm not gonna give you a date this time. I think we're just gonna wait and see what happens and work with Daniel and hope that if the current website stays live, we'll be up sooner. And if it doesn't, then we might need a little bit more time. But we will be launching soon and it's looking great. And I guess I won't make you go backwards, but I did want to mention that Napa Valley College was selected the best college, the best nursing school, the best performing arts theater, and Professor Claudette Shadow was the best educator. And all four of those awards are part of the twenty-twenty-two Napa Valley's Finest, which is a program that the Napa Valley Register puts out. And those awards are from the readers of the register, they selected us. So we're very proud of all four of those honors, right? Yes, congratulations. And we also decided to give a little bit of love back to the Napa Valley Register, since we see that our community is reading it, whether it be online or print. So we do have some above-the-fold ads that you might have seen in that two seconds that zipped by. But we also have a series of digital ads that we are airing, that we have on the, the website for the Napa Valley Register. And, oh, the, the big thing, what have I been working on? We have a, a community open house this Saturday. That threw me off when all my visuals went, from eleven to three. And I am really excited about this event, I hope you're all able to join us, it's gonna be really fun. In addition to fifty-something tables with information from our academic programs, our student support services, our administration, we even have a Board of Trustees table. We also have a lot of community partners, we'll have a lot of activities on our stage. Mike Thompson will be joining us, we'll have a graduation ceremony for our Transportation Distribution and Logistics Program. We'll have an excerpt from Beauty and the Beast. Dr. Tia Madison, who's doing a performance in the spring in our stage, will be doing the monologue from her one-woman show, Brand New Shoes. American Canyon High School will be here, doing some songs from the Twenty-Fifth Annual Putnam City Spelling Bee. Napa School of Music will be here, Ballet Folklorico, Napa High. We also have face painters, hands-on art activities, aerial silks, lawn games, frisbees, and all sorts of fun. So I do hope that you are planning to join us and tell your friends, it's gonna be a great day. And really, I talk about the fun, but this event is a really key component of our strategy to reengage the community, which Dr. Powell alluded to earlier. And we are inviting the community to come and rediscover Napa Valley College. It's also their chance to meet our new Superintendent President and to meet many of you. Mr. Monopoly will also be on hand and we'll have a scavenger hunt. Mr. Monopoly, you know the game, Monopoly? Yeah, so, because we've got some exciting news, the new Napa Monopoly game is coming out next week and you'll see a special square on there for a place, we're not allowed to announce it yet, that you might recognize. Where are we right now? Okay, and so Mr. Monopoly's gonna pay us a special visit, we'll have a special fun scavenger hunt that will get our guests to visit many of the different booths and participate in activities. We've got some great prizes from many of our partners, including two grand prizes, which are an iPad courtesy of the foundation and two three-day general admission passes to Bottle Rock. So please join us. And I'm gonna hand out now, you mentioned earlier, exploration pathways. And it's perfect timing because we just got back some promotional materials that we've done for exploration pathways, both in Spanish and English. And we also have some other materials, I only have the English versions in here, but everything we're doing right now for promotional purposes, we're also doing in Spanish. And so I will share these with you, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments brief. I do just want to acknowledge the collective work of the college and the campus for accreditation, the lead-up to it. You know, Robyn, your leadership on this has been phenomenal. And it's just been a process, I think, that has been very helpful for the college and is gonna continue to help us. Some of the, the comments from the, the team members, they were very complimentary of the college, of, of our honesty, of, I think, how diligent we've been in terms of assessing where we're at. And then the commitment that we've demonstrated to, to addressing some of the areas that they, you know, we've already identified ourselves as, as growth areas and targets. And I think that, you know, a lot of the information that's shared tonight from the team is reflective of that commitment. I know I don't say it enough, but I appreciate all of you, the work that you do, I think it's outstanding. The leadership in your respective areas is really demonstrating that commitment and that passion that we collectively as a campus need to help us get to a better place, and I think we're gonna be just fine. Just a couple of quick things for me, I, I've been on a, or I'm, I'm starting to engage in what I call a, a campus tour, a world tour of the campus, just visiting with the program, so I get a better understanding of, of all of the, you know, the instructional programs, the student support programs. And I started this past Friday with the, a tour of the Psych Tech Program, which turned into a tour of all of the health programs. It just kind of ballooned into this really great tour. And I think it's just important for me as, as a president to have a thorough understanding of all of the programs, so that when I'm out in the community and those connection opportunities pop up, then, you know, I can do an instant recall to things and maybe find those connections. So I have started that now. And yeah, I just really look forward to continuing to dig into the work, to, you know, start addressing some of these other, other things that'll pop up during accreditation and just continue to advance the college and get us to a better place. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Powell, what a, what a team. Great work, you guys. Fifteen point two standing committee and other appointment reports. We don't have trustee Baldini, who is off at the General Counsel Office of Georgia, not the state, the country. And he's presenting a bottle of, of College Cabernet, along with a note from Dr. Powell about the wine. So that's just a little side note, but we will be skipping our DOS and, and Vidiculture and Winery Report. And we don't have anything to report out of audit and finance, nor do we have anything to report out of real property. Although, Mr. Reeves and, and, and Dr. Powell, I think it'd be really nice once we get that property manager on board to have them make a, a, a presentation or just talk with the real property committee, just to see how everything's going, talking about finances and next steps, timeline and so on. So that's just one note there, and we will go to a College Foundation report.
I don't have a geyser either. Jim Reeves kind of highlighted on what's going on with the foundation, so nothing to report on that.
Well, then we will move to future agenda item requests. Anything to add while AP twenty-three forty is still alive? Seen no comments, we will go to our trustee reports. We don't have our student trustee here this evening, and I will go in alphabetical order to my right and trustee Baker.
Awesome. I've almost brought up in future agenda items, but I don't think it really is. So just gonna bring up that I have been attending as part of my work life, the Benicia Police, Citizens Police Academy, which has been very fun and very interesting. And it's also brought to mind several times, wondering what we're planning or if we're planning to be reviewing our academy anytime soon. It's only been six months, but just was wondering if we had any update on that and what might or might not be coming. So, and it was very nice to attend the Dodd family reunion, I mean, I'm sorry, the groundbreaking. So it was very fun.
There's a lot of us.
Just wonderful to, to see that. And I, I'm not gonna name names, but there was a post on social media where someone tried to pull credit. And so I just want to make certain everyone here knows that we know where the credit is due. So also enjoyed going to the Hispanic Chamber Mixer. It was nice to see Oscar and be on a first-name basis with him for a change. And the accreditation, the peer review site visit, I was there yesterday. And no surprises, but definitely some work to do. But just, you know, one of the things that keeps coming to mind for me is that we've been, we've got such an amazing success story with the FICMAT report and getting off the enhanced monitoring. And so I hundred percent believe that we will get through any additional hurdles as we go forward. Planning to go to the petting tomorrow and we'll be here on Saturday as well. So that's all I have. Oh, but please vote, don't forget to vote.
Thank you, trustee Baker, trustee Deluna?
So I don't have a lot to add, except for the, I did attend the CCCT trustee board meeting and it was wonderful to actually be in person in Sacramento with everybody. And just to see the, the, just the history that's there, the experience of all the trustees and really their passion to bring education forward for all of our community colleges. I'm so glad and thankful for our D I report and just everything really that we're doing. We're, we're on such a wonderful trajectory at this point. And I just look forward to everything that has to come, and I'll see you all on Saturday.
Thank you, trustee Goff.
Great, just, just a few notes. Number one is, I've been talking to the person in the academic affairs seat for four years and I am so excited that guided pathways is moving forward. Thank you so much, you made my entire night, just, just by that. Also, the community outreach to the high schools, thank you, thank you, thank you. That support to potential students is never a moment wasted, so I really greatly appreciate that. And we have such potential in our youth in this valley. And I see students every day just miss that opportunity because they just don't know. So thank you very much. I want to thank Daniel Vega and his team for consistently, you know, beating their heads against the wall when it comes to technology and, and still showing up and, and making it happen, even, you know, when people like me have no idea what you're doing. But thank you for doing it, I just really appreciate it. And I want to encourage this board to continue to financially support IT, because as we've learned, without it, we're basically dead in the water. So I really want to encourage that to happen. I really enjoyed the groundbreaking, it was very exciting to see that move forward. I had a really great opportunity to meet with Dr. Powell not once but twice over the month. He attended the Night at the Ruins Dinner, which was a great event to show off American Canyon. But also, he came down and actually spent some time at our school and was able to see our diverse population. And I'm looking forward to hosting him later this month in my classes. So I'm very happy that you've made time to do that, I'm really looking forward to you speaking to my students. And of course, I'm looking forward to being here at the open house on Saturday. It's a really busy day, I'm doing five different hats that day, but I will be here with my name tag on, I promise. Did you guys notice, I, I remembered it tonight, I'm really proud of myself. So, and thank you, Holly Dawson, and your team for putting that together, it sounds like a great event. So thank you very much.
Beth almost sold me a house in American Canyon, we did the tour, by the way. Yeah, yeah. I haven't picked out, I don't think it's for sale though, the one that I want, so.
Trustee Iverson?
I love this time of year and there's a lot of really good, positive things going on. And I appreciate everybody's work in it and, and we have solid leadership right now and looking forward to this year.
Trustee Rios?
I also was at the groundbreaking and I really liked that construction did not stop while we were there. So I'm not surprised that we may be ahead of schedule. But I am a little concerned, I don't know if, if there was a shovel given to a certain trustee that was very upset. And I want to know if he, if he didn't get it, maybe we can all pitch in and get him a shovel and paint it and, and get that to him. So hopefully, someone can help me with that. I'm looking at you, Holly. Oh, wow.
Wow.
Yes.
Look at the pressure being pulled. Thank you, trustee Rios.
Thank you, that's all.
Dr. Warrenal, I just want to thank you, kind of, there you are. This individual, I really want to give you a big shout-out for all of your tremendous work. I mean, who knows what, I probably suspect it's unlikely that maybe we come out totally clean or whatever, but it, it's no, I think, part in terms of all the effort that you have dedicated to this accreditation review. And ultimately, I think, why it's gonna be such a great thing is, Dr. Powell, you know, we were just so honest. I think that's what I just love, just the candor and all the reporting and, and ultimately, that's gonna make us better, you know, looking forward. So yeah, it's a really, really great effort. So thank you so much for all, all that you've done over the past few years. And then one point, I got to my fun thing, college thing, this, this past week, on Tuesday, I played golf with the Napa Valley College men's team. Invite with the, got to play, it was like the most, the funnest thing, what a great group of student athletes. You know, I didn't, I would say I finished last, for sure, there was no question about that. But it was a lot, it was a lot of fun and a, and a great, great group of young men. So yes, with that, we will be meeting next November ten. And we will adjourn this meeting at eight twenty PM. Thank you.